We're on TV room for some, telling the camera.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March fourth meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take notes of all the exits around the room in case there's some mishap, and if there is, use that one because you'd be running into snow, I think, that way. And now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go to our first item on the agenda, I want to take a quick note, a minute to, or second, to thank the media committee. We do this at almost every meeting, but I'd like to point out that in case for people who are watching this at home on television or on their computer monitors, the media committee arrives here about thirty to forty-five minutes before this meeting begins, and they typically stay about fifteen to thirty minutes afterwards cleaning everything up. This is all done voluntarily by them, basically just in the service of open and transparent government, and I just want to thank them for that kind of service because they are here longer hours than what we are.
Even when our meetings only last two minutes, they're here for like two hours.
Firstly, so. The first item on the agenda is a new application called Hudson-Statsburg Storage. It involves the conversion of the former PDQ factory, it was a lot industrial use, down on Route nine, being converted into storage units. And I'll turn this over to the applicants who are here tonight. Can you state your names for the record? Tell us what narrative you want to about it. The director will come and yell if you don't say that into the microphone.
Yeah, feel free to pull it down and speak directly into it.
Steven Tinkelman, Tinkelman Architecture.
Robert Turner, Tinkelman Architecture.
Thank you. So we had a meeting, an offline meeting with a couple of us, and Ms. Moss, our senior administrator, as well as the applicants. I think you've all had a chance to see the site plan, and the conversion is ninety-nine percent along the interior. They're only proposing a new portago to the west so that when you drive up, if it's raining, you'd be able to unload something and not have it get wet. And they're also proposing a change in the sign. Anything you want to add, gentlemen?
No, thank you for entertaining this application tonight. You know, just as a follow-up to the chairman's comment, the project also-
That means speak up into the microphone. Sorry, pull it over towards you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
The project also will take the building into the realm of having all the code issues that may exist in the building and be corrected as well. There's no major issues, of course, but as a change of use, there's some new components that go into the project. So that's a good thing, is that the building will reflect all of current codes and such as well.
And I sent an email to you just about some things we might be looking for after our agenda meeting. One of them was just to note that since you list on a chart that there's two residential uses and there's only one house shown, that maybe it's a condition of approval to show where the other dwelling unit is, which I believe is on the top floor of the main building, I'll call it. That's correct. And that's going to remain a residential use, it's not being converted to storage. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let me start with Mr. Rodenhäusen, welcome back, it's been a while. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
Do you have any comments on this application?
No, I don't. Did you say that's going to be a condition, that there'd be a second residence shown or that you actually show it on your-
It would be a condition, it's not shown at the moment, it's just listed on a chart, I believe.
Is that going to be in the final site plan?
Yeah.
Good.
This is just for, it's record-keeping, that's all.
No other prob, no questions?
I believe when we met with the owner of the site, he indicated that it might be that the manager might live up there or live in the house, so we just want to make sure it's in the record, particularly for the fire department, so they know that there might be a residence living on top. And let me start to my left, any comments, Mr. Sigman?
Yes, how about sidewalk? I know that that's required or requested, and I don't see any on this. So are you considering a sidewalk?
We'd like not to put the sidewalks in. We understand that, you know, the goal in the ordinance as to why you do that. If you consider the land uses, you know, a mile up and back, and I think it's really not a pedestrian area on any level. And so the idea of doing that, it seems like an exercise of meeting the ordinance rather than, sorry-
Might need to pull it closer.
Rather than, you know, rather than find, you know, resolving a, you know, a kind of a functional solution to something. I would rather, you know, offer up that, you know, if it's, if there are other concerns in terms of the look of the site, I would also say that my client might consider making it a condition if there ever's a change in, you know, it's not a hamlet, you know, and so I'm not trying to be indignant by taking the position, but I just don't understand its functionality of it.
Okay. The second thing would be landscaping to make it more attractive in the front. As you drive by now, it's kind of stark, so have you considered improving the landscaping at all?
Our client has done a good job at keeping up the building. It's a hard comment because of the snow, you know, and we're gonna, we're gonna hope for some heat wave before the next meeting so we can take a look at it and respond to that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sigman. Let me just bring that up so that everybody can comment on it. I do want to just throw in my two cents about the sidewalk first, not to try to influence the rest, but to go back a moment, when the zoning was passed, there were several commercial districts created, the two largest are the Town Center Historic District, which is what we're in right now, and then on nine G, there's also the East Park Business District. It's a slightly smaller scale. The largest scale here is sixty-five thousand square feet for use, and there it's forty thousand. And they also created some neighborhood business districts. And if you read the criteria for an NBD, the use is supposed to reflect ones that would create gatherings. By that I mean, it states that there should be sidewalks in these districts because they should, they're supposed to be located adjacent to neighborhoods. And the kinds of uses that were envisioned were cafes, coffee shops, things that people would walk up to and gather collectively. In this instance, there, and there are several of these, I believe I pointed out at the agenda meeting, that there's actually a neighborhood business district at the end of, I think it's Quaker, that's one property within the neighborhood around it. So in some ways, the NBD, some of them actually function because they're areas of commerce that are right by neighborhoods where people could walk up and go to them. In others, I think the label might be a little bit misleading, and this seems to be one of them. There is no densely populated neighborhood around it. The houses that really exist on South Cross, Ms. Dexter, to my right, lives down there, they tend to be long shotgun lots, the houses are closer to the road, and there's no sidewalk along South Cross, I'm not even sure there'd be a safe location for it because of great changes. So I personally don't see that there's a neighborhood that exists to utilize it. Now, there's also an argument that could be made that you should have sidewalks between the existing commercial sites. In this case, one is empty, it's a former landscaping company. The only use that I can think of that people would walk to maybe from this site would be to the little kind of grocery store that's part of the gas station next door. And honestly, I don't see that there's a lot of interconnectivity there myself, not enough to warrant the cost of a sidewalk in an area that's, as you stated correctly, Mr. Tinkelman, I don't believe is pedestrian-oriented at the moment. There's also a nursing home further down or further north on the west side of nine, that's a rehabilitation center and nursing home. I don't think you'd want to encourage those individuals to be walking up and down, so from my two cents, I don't think it's necessary. Mr. Murphy, do you want to weigh in?
First of all, I think it's an excellent use of the property. I'm glad to see something going in there. I don't always agree with Michael, but in this case I do. I think that, you know, this is not the kind of operation or anything around it that's going to generate foot traffic. And I also agree with Ed, I'd like to have you review the landscaping when the snow goes away, maybe in July.
Because it just keeps piling up. Ms. Dexter?
I echo, it sounds like a great reuse of this, of this building, and I hadn't realized that the house there is actually part of the same lot. This is the one that's got the driveway, and he's out on South Cross Road, right? It's a little white house in the back, gotcha. I just did want to mention that, because I do live there, I actually do see people walking there, they're coming from the senior apartments behind the rehabilitation center, and they do go to the gas station next door. Not many of them, there's like two people that I know that walk up that way, because I'm guessing they don't have wheels. But otherwise, I do not see a lot of foot traffic that way. Most people, if they're coming, if they're going anywhere, they're walking from the condominiums down there into town this way, so you see foot traffic that way, but you don't really see it.
I forgot there are senior apartments behind that building. You can't see them from the road, so I forgot they were there.
Right, so that's the only people I ever see. But I don't think that it really warrants the need for the sidewalk. This is kind of a strange incantation of the neighborhood business district. I also would like to see what kind of landscaping you can do, nothing fancy, just, you know, something to dress it up a little bit would be great. And are you going to be changing the colors on the building?
At this point in time, the owner is not looking at changing the colors of the building.
I think he recently painted it, like, within the last five years, yeah.
And so he's looking to maintain it, and that's the main goal, is to just clean the building up, maintain it as it currently is. So I mean, if there's something that's, might be loose, maybe a shingle, or if some flashing, he's, you know, make the building look presentable, but he's not going to be changing the colors at this time.
Now, there were apartments in there also, are there still apartments in there?
There is a single unit up on the second floor.
Right.
It hasn't, in the time that our client has used the building, it's never been used as a residence.
Okay, because I used to know people who rented it.
He basically used it as storage.
Okay. He did used to rent it out, probably ten, fifteen years ago.
But it's something that he would like to consider as an option as he goes forward.
Okay, then he would need to make sure that he includes that in, you know, if nothing else for parking and, but otherwise.
Yeah, the unit is laid out, you know, as an apartment, it just, it hasn't been freshened up in many years, so it's really a matter of that.
Yeah, whether he does or doesn't, we just need to know probably if that is his plan to just include that on the site plan.
Okay. And I know it's, when I was doing the parking calculations, I did include spaces for that unit, as well as the house.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's there, so I gotta provide for it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Again, I echo my colleagues here, you know, I think it's a great use for the space, and when the snow finally melts, see what, you know, can be done to spruce up the exterior a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merciliano?
No comment.
Okay, this, I think you heard basically that there's a lot of excitement to see the adaptive reuses go into the building, and there's a concern for landscaping. I think the sidewalk issue, I didn't, I only heard it sort of, we can go forward as we continue the discussion, but it doesn't sound like that there's a lot of impetus to push it in this area, given the unique characteristics of the property and the area. One thing was when we were looking at the original site plan approval, there were three trees shown to be planted, I believe, to the north, sort of to the north side. I'll take a look at that plan again, it may be that that would be what might improve the landscaping, is to have the trees, I don't know if they were originally installed and then died, or if they were never installed, because it's an old site plan application, that might dress it up. I know that both Mr. Sigman and I have driven by, and it's hard to see, but you can, you can tell that there's still existing juniper-
Yes.
-and something in the front bed, it's just, it's unclear where it is right now because of the snow.
Yeah, there's a low-lying hedge in the front.
Okay. So I believe we're prepared to sit a public hearing and also type and refer the action. Who has this file?
I do. Resolution typing action referring the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Hudson-Statsburg Storage LLC, resolution number fifteen dash three, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under secret for, for which an uncoordinated review will be conducted, and two, directs secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section two thirty-nine M of the general municipal law.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Knapp, can you request ex without a review on this? We haven't sent anything to county planning since early November, so, and just to note to everybody up here, I think you may have seen it, but Ms. Levonway, who normally reviews for Hyde Park, is out on maternity leave and won't be back until September.
It's John Clark.
John Clark is reviewing, and I think that he can probably get this to us fairly quickly, since there's not that much to the exterior, so that noted, would it be okay with everyone if we set a public hearing to begin our next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see, March eighteenth, we'll see you back then to start the public hearing, and we'll ask to see if we can get the response back from county planning prior to that.
Okay, if you don't get a response before that-
We'll hold the public, we can, we'll hold the public hearing open for another two weeks until we receive it, and then we can close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And we need it, do we need an extra set to be able to refer to county planning, correct?
The question is to me?
No, to Donna. In other words, we didn't get, we didn't get that made-
With the elevation.
Right, so could we get a set, another set to refer to county planning? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And have a safe drive.
I think it's bumping into your microphone a bit.
Thank you.
Was that the microphone talking?
Been here in a while, it's fun.
You're welcome, thank you.
Oh, it's the director.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is also a new application. Maybe new is the wrong way to phrase this. Camp Victory Lake is the large camp that you see on the north side of Cremelbo Road, roughly due east, or west, I'm sorry, of Quaker Lane. About once a year during the summer, there's a big confluence of individuals, and throughout the rest of the year, it seems to not be really utilized that much. So in going back to the files, this was originally approved, it looks like, in nineteen ninety-two, and then, and the original, even before that, whenever it was approved, there didn't appear to be site plan requirements, so.
Didn't we have this once before?
We reviewed this, four of us, Mr. Renninger, Mr. Murphy, you and I reviewed this back in two thousand and six, our first year.
Yeah.
First year.
Yeah.
And the site plan expired, so this is, please state your name for the record, so.
Rich Renia, engineer for the project with Renia Engineering Design.
And Mr. Renia, I'm gonna let you take it over from there, so you can give us whatever background you'd like to.
Okay, my firm was hired by the owners, the Northeast Conference of Seventh Day Venice, to get them into compliance. We had a meeting last year, an off-the-line meeting, where they would like to, their future goals is to try to get a new master plan approved, but before moving ahead and doing that, they need to get their existing site into compliance. And currently, this existing wastewater treatment plant has never been signed off on. As we went through the files, we found in the building department that the entire building has been built, it's in operation, it's treating wastewater for the site, but it's never been issued a COVO. So working with the building department, they've, gave us a long list of items that we needed to compile for them, and one of them was to get sign-off from the zoning administrator that it was built per the approved site plan. In going back to that route, it was determined that the site plan has expired, therefore the zoning administrator cannot approve or certify that it was built to the approved site plan. So that puts us back here, asking or looking for-
For a reapproval.
Reapproval.
Okay. So that leads me to a couple of questions that I didn't see necessarily in your narrative. If the new one is in operation, then was the former, the one that was maybe needing repair or replacement, was that decommissioned?
I don't know the answer to that. The first time I saw reference to that was in Tad's letter that I just got tonight. I intend to investigate that and see what the status of that was.
Okay, because depending on the age of the sewage treatment system, back in the day, some use mercury, some use other elements that would be considered not good for the environment, and if I recall, the former facility is surrounded by wetlands that are regulated, so it would be a concern of the boards to make certain that if there's been a closing or decommissioning, however you want to phrase it, that it was done properly. I think also, I don't believe you submitted them, but we probably should get copies of current speedies permits or approval from DOH as well. And then the other items that I said would be needed, I think I emailed them to you after the agenda meeting-
Yeah.
-just for the rest of the board, it's copies of any New York State Department of Environmental Conservation petroleum bulk storage permits, and a copy of a two thousand and thirteen survey by Decker that's referenced. The reason why we need that is, when you go into personal access, it shows some strange things, I'll just leave it at that. The personal access is not always accurate, so we just need to make sure of a survey. And then also, if we're gonna have, Ms. Paul Doro emailed you today the note to put on, and we'll also need signature blocks, because for it to be a site plan, I have to sign some sort of thing to sign it. So that noted, Mr. Rodenhäusen, do you have any comments, any additional comments?
You've covered it all.
No?
Thank you.
Wow.
Let me start to my right, Mr. Merciliano, any comments?
No, I would like a better copy of the plan, and I would like to go see the facility if I could. I didn't, I might be a little late on that, but I wouldn't mind doing that.
Bring your notebook.
We can set that up.
Yeah, I guess not, yeah.
Yeah, you haven't seen it yet, so.
I don't know what to say about that.
Right, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
No, I'll arrange with Mr. Renia a time for us to go.
Well, when, this is-
Snowmelt?
Oh. That's true.
Be after the fact.
Well, no, this has a driveway that's accessible, this would be open, yeah.
Okay.
This would be, you could get to this.
And actually, what would, what would you see right now?
You'd see the outside of the building, the main part of the building itself, you could see the driveway and the access into it, and get an idea of where it's located in, in the site. It's centrally located in the site, so from the outside of the site, you don't see it. You would also be able to take a look around the inside if you want, I mean, you could witness yourself that it's an operating wastewater plant.
Well, well, yeah.
Is someone there, a full-time to maintain it, or is it like something?
They have a contracted operator, VRI is the operator who operates it.
And how often do they attend?
They, as far as the speedies permit goes, I believe that it's a daily check on it, somebody goes in.
Yeah, but it's only like an hour.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal, they're only there for a little time.
Well, an hour a day would be.
Taking a test and seeing.
Yeah, that'd be a pretty big deal.
Moving on. So you'd have to, you'd have to make an arrangement if you want to go inside.
But we can get, I mean, we can get access even if VRI isn't there.
Yeah, right.
We've been there multiple times, because one of the items that the building department asked for was an ASBIL certification that the building and the interior was built correctly, so we've, we've gone and been there, so.
Was it, did you, in other words, did you build it, I'm trying to understand this, but you built this to the specifications that were approved the last time you were here, in front of us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just never followed through with the paperwork?
Right, nobody, nobody ever filed through with closing out the building permit.
Did you, was it built, as far as your engineering standards, was it built the way they said it was?
Yes, yeah, we felt that it was built correctly.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though.
We didn't design it, though.
No, no, but correct me if I'm wrong, when this is approved, or when I signed the site plan in two thousand and seven, you had a year in which to commence and two years in which to complete. I don't believe that the site, the sewage treatment plant was completed within two years, which is why the site plan expired. In other words, it wasn't just a matter of lack of follow-through, I think there was still some funding issues to get-
Oh, yeah, there's a, from what I could see, there was a history of them renewing the building permit and renewing it, and then it got built, and nobody, somehow, nobody ever closed it, everything out.
In other words, remember, I should add, this is a religious group that owns and operates the site, and so, as with often nonprofits, there are times where they're flush with cash, and other times they're not, and since this, so the intensity of the use on this was not supposed to be increased when we made the original approval, and that's, again, this doesn't operate sort of continuously in need of lots and lots of sewage treatment, the system is not utilized that much. It has a one big time of the year utilization when they have, the camp is operational, so, and I don't recall, I don't know if you do, Mr. Renia, if this was under, do you, Department of Health ordered the replacement? Do you know what occasioned this?
I'm not sure if it was ordered, I would think that there was something happened.
I think, I'm pretty sure it was, as my, my recollection is, it was, and basically, what we're trying to, what they're asking us to do is to validate what's there.
Absolutely.
All right, so I'm, I'm wondering if we need to get into, you know, a big art form here, because basically-
No, I think what, the only thing I'm really concerned about is the closure because of the sensitivity. One thing I need to emphasize to everybody is, in looking, Mr. Rodenhäusen can correct me if I'm wrong, but in examining the file, Ms. Paul Doro and Mr. Rodenhäusen discovered that prior boards just kept reaffirming seeker, and the seeker goes back maybe to nineteen ninety-two, or something really a long time ago. So my only concern is that when the older, the old system is closed and decommissioned, that it's done properly, because the wetlands around it would make it sensitive, and I don't think any of us really want any chemicals or toxic pollutants going into what would ultimately be the, would this be the Marichika, I would think that would go by here?
No.
Falkil, Falkil.
Mr. Renia, wouldn't, wouldn't the health department be involved in that? In other words, wouldn't they mandate that, or not necessarily?
Yeah, well, the, one of the items that we do have in the file is, is a letter from the health department approving the operation of the wastewater plant, so they were involved with that. I'm just very-
It'd be the approval of the new wastewater plant.
Okay.
Yeah, but not-
Department of Health doesn't look at wetlands in balance.
I haven't, I have not seen any documentation on, on a old wastewater plant.
Decommissioning your-
Okay.
That's something that I definitely have to investigate myself personally, I would like to see the building, you know, that it's been brought up here tonight, and be able to honestly tell you that I found where it was at, or, you know, I'll do a document search for it as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
I don't really have a comment, thanks.
Mr. Murphy, any additional comments?
No, nothing, just, like I said, the decommissioning part, but other than that, I think we're just, we're just gonna, you know, legitimize what-
This is one of those, I thought, oh, this is gonna be an easy breezy thing, and then Ms. Moss's letter was a bit cryptic, so I finally realized that she was basically saying, we need to make sure that the O was closed and closed out properly, and also need to make certain that, because the approval was given back in two thousand and seven, that the permits are still valid for the operation of the new system. I assume it is, or you wouldn't be operating with it, but do you know how long the new system's been open and operating, how many years?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I just can't remember that.
Okay, can you find that out for us?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sigman, any comments?
Yeah, the only comment I want to make is if, if I recall, there's been an addition of fuels that are being stored around the building. Now, are they introducing anything different to what was built and approved?
No, one was a, there's a backup emergency generator-
Right.
-for the plant, so there's a diesel tank for that, and then there's a heating fuel tank.
Okay.
So I think what, the original plan showed one tank in the fenced-in area, and we found that there was two, so we just wanted to note that, and we put that on our ASBIL.
Hence my request for the petroleum bulk storage permits from DEC to make sure that both have been verified, since only one was approved.
And one thing we did do, I can answer you on that, we did check the DEC website, and there is no record of any petroleum bulk storage permits for that site.
Okay.
It's our understanding that there are none.
Okay. Write that down. Thank you.
Nothing else.
Okay, so we were prepared to type the action, and this has to be referred to county planning because it's on a county road, and we can also set the public hearing if everyone feels like we're, the time is ripe. So who has this file?
I do. Resolution classifying the action referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Camp Victory Lake, WWTP, resolution fifteen dash four, of Planning and Development, Camp Victory Lake, WWTP, resolution 15-4, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action and declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project, and directs its secretary to refer the site plan to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239-M of the general municipal law, and directs, directs its secretary to refer the site plan set to the Roosevelt Fire District and the Conservation Advisory Committee for review and comment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously. Do you guys want to set the public hearing to start in two weeks as well?
Sure.
Is that okay with you?
Yep.
Making a motion to the public hearing for March 18th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see you in two weeks, and I want to just make sure for the record that I'm clear on this, and I, again, don't mean to make this something small, tempest into a teapot, tempest into a teapot, however it goes. But the reason why we haven't reaffirmed seeker is I want to, I want to make sure that you explore what needs to be done for the decommissioning of the existing plant, or the older plant.
Yeah, I completely understand.
Because that would be a seeker issue if it has wetlands impacts. So anyway, then we'll wait to get some more information from you, and we'd appreciate getting that as soon as you can, but if you bring it up at the meeting, don't worry. Just don't expect to hear a lot of comment back, we have to absorb all of it.
What I will get turned around right away is the revisions to the ASBIL plan.
Right.
And I'll get that back as soon as possible, I should be able to turn that around this week, so then that can be circulated, and then we'll investigate the, the history of the old plant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then just for everybody's edification of...
Copies.
Pardon me?
Five copies, she said, I believe.
For circulation.
For circulation, oh, we're circulating to county planning, CAC, because of the wet, potential wetlands impact.
Roosevelt Fire Department.
Roosevelt Fire Department, and...
Department of Health, 239M.
This is at three, wait, 239M, CAC, Fire Department.
DEC.
DOH, and, right, Department of Health.
Department of Health.
And DEC.
And DEC, five copies, I'm sorry, for circulation.
And that's on top of the, the minimum required number for the board, correct?
Yes, we, right. Anything else? Okay, before, I just want to point out that Ms. Moss hasn't been coming because she's basically the head of the scout troop, and her son's in it, but if anybody wants Ms. Moss at any particular time, let me know in advance, because with warning, she can reschedule to be here. And also, they're changing the dates of the meeting, so that September she'll be back here for good.